Okay then, Willie, I think that's two o'clock, so if you wanted to start taking me through the agenda, that'd be much appreciated.
Thanks, convener. Just checking everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, thank you. So firstly, just to let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded and the recording will be placed on the council website for public viewing. I'll now take a roll call of members for the minute and I would ask if members have confirmed their present when I call their name. Billy Keenan.
Present.
Billy Wright.
Present.
Billy McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you. Billy Scott.
Apologies, present.
Okay, and I've received apologies from Deputy Lord Provost Ewan Ackla. councillor Black.
I'm here.
Okay councillor Hunter.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Thank you. And finally councillor Short.
I'm here.
Yeah, thank you. That then takes you on to the agenda as submitted and firstly, are there any declarations of interest from any members to the content of the agenda as it's submitted?
Looks like no.
Okay, and there being no declarations, that takes you on to item two, Education Scotland visits St Peter and Paul's Primary School, this is for noting. You look to say a few words on this report, Mrs May?
Yes, thank you convener, just a few words of introduction. Overall, a very positive report, as you can see, St Peter and Paul's Primary School was inspected back in May and we just received the full report there in September. So from that point of view, you know, bit late coming to scrutiny, but it's here now. So as again, you can see, it was a full inspection, so that means that all four quality indicators were evaluated and all assessed to be good across the board. So a bit of a profile of the school there at the front, just describing the role and the percentage of that role that would be children with additional support needs. The feature of the Scottish Multiple Index data as well to show the level of challenge in that particular school community, as well as the numbers and percentage of the children receiving free school meals. So given a bit of a profile of the school. So overall, a good report. One of the things that we're always delighted to note are the strengths of the school and great to see relationships, both positive relationships across the children and the staff. Also, the teacher leadership is helping to direct improvement in the school. So some good empowered teachers there taking leadership and great to see that description of a nurturing, calm and inclusive environment and ethos created there and wider achievement supported as well. So as always with scrutiny, there are areas for improvement and again, always good for us to see that the three areas of improvement contain the words continue to or further develop, which is a sign message for us as a local authority because it tells us the school knows itself well and they'd already begun that journey of making these improvements and they will all be included in the school's improvement plan. So stop there, Paul Fleming has said education is on the call for answering questions and I believe the head teacher was joining us as well and is also on the call Denise Darby, if anyone has questions. Thank you convener.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I'll just go right on to the questions and I see Billy McPherson in first, so.
Yeah, not so much, thanks convener, not so much a question, more really a comment. I think it's an excellent report and I think the director there really covered the fact that the areas for improvement are all the usual, when you've got a good report that is, should further develop, should continue to develop, should continue to improve. In other words, the school is on a very positive trajectory and I think congratulations go to Denise and her colleagues at the school for what I think is a very positive report, convener.
Thanks for that. Okay, well, we want Billy Scott.
I wanted to ask about the paragraph that deals with exclusions from school and it mentions about some pupils are on a part-time timetable. I just wonder what sort of numbers they are and why do they go on to a part-time timetable and what work's being done to try and get them backed up to full-time timetable as soon as possible? And then as an indication as to how widespread this is across the school's community, does it feature in most schools?
Is looking to answer that, head teacher or Paul?
I'm happy to come in, convener, on that question. Thank you very much Billy Scott for the question. There'll be a very small number of young people, children in St Peter and Paul's, very, very small, but always careful with saying that in terms of recognizing individuals. But flexible timetables are used in very, very unique circumstances when there are significant needs. That could be, for example, a child returning to the local authority from out with, and we are very closely with our partners, third sector, social workers, so on, to actually fill up that timetable with other experiences to build that child or young person's time back into school. So they're very carefully monitored in terms of their plan and the aim is always to make sure that the child is successful in their learning, has a strong connection with the school. So it's a positive experience and that is built up at a pace, but at a pace that is suitable to the child. So it's all in the child's best interest and again, that's agreed with parents and caregivers as well. But this is actually an area of priority for us in the Children's Family Services, assessing that across the city and really just quality sureing to make sure that they are used when it is absolutely appropriate to do so. The parents and carers are involved in that and that they're evaluated and that they move forward to full-time timetable, if you like, as soon as possible. So hopefully that answers your questions, but happy to follow up.
Yes, yes, it has, thank you. I just hadn't read that in an inspection report before, so I thought it might just been peculiar to this school, but no, it's something that may happen elsewhere as well.
Is the chief exec looking to make a comment?
Thanks convener. It was more a question for you whether you thought it might be appropriate to bring in Mrs Darby, the head teacher, just to see if there was anything else she wanted to add to the question over and above what Paul had given.
More than happy if Mrs Darby wants to do that, that'd be useful.
Hi there everyone. Yes, no, just listening to the comments that Paul had made, that's exactly what we do at St Peter and Paul's and I've got really great success stories that we did have just a couple of children who were on that part-time timetable and they have moved into a new stage and they're all full-time. And through the procedures and strategies that we've used, we've got new children that have come into the school with need and all are managing to cope full-time. So we don't now have any children that are on any part-time timetable and that's through the all the processes, the meetings to ensure that we get it right for every child. So just wanted to share that success with you as well.
Excellent, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay councillor Hunter.
Yeah, I've just got a comment as well and just very similar to what Billy McPherson said. I think this is a really good report and is a great credit to yourself Denise and all the staff, all the good work that's been going on in the school. And as you say, when you see areas for improvement, it's always continue and you know, doing the same kind of thing, but just building on it. I think that shows a great credit to the school for all the work that's been going on. So really it was just an opportunity just here just to say congratulations to Denise and our staff for all the good work that they're doing. It's a really good inspection report and certainly take back to the school our appreciation for all the good work that's been going on in St Peter and Paul.
Yeah, thanks for that. Councillor Short.
Good afternoon. Mine was with regards to that wider school community. I was recently at our LCPP and as we know, the LCPPs across Maryfield and Coldside have begun to be larger as we come together. And one of the assistant head teachers was there from St Peter and Paul's. So that fact that they see themselves as the heart of the community is also very reassuring that, you know, Mrs May, it's always Mrs May, it's not just me. And Mrs May said at the beginning that they are very much that community minded and that is actually happening in practice as well. So I'd like to pass on my congratulations to the head teacher for that involvement. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for the comment. My comments were something very similar to others have made. Well done and I asked yourself as the head teacher to pass that on to the staff. I did particularly like the sort of culture being developed in respect of beliefs, culture and traditions of, you know, each child and their families. And you know, a really important message and I'm sure it's delivered right across our school estate, given that there is a lot of sort of tensions and people out there that makes the world know a very nice place. But you know, what should happen and what appears to be happening there is there's a very good culture within the school that's caring and people, the kids all feel secure and safe, which is really important at that stage in their life. So thanks very much and pass these comments on to the rest of the staff, it'd be appreciated. There doesn't appear to be any further questions then, is this report agreed? Thank you. So we'll move on then, Willie, to the next report.
Okay, thanks very much convener. Takes you on to item three, my annual report on complaints. This is also for noting.
Okay, is anyone want to say anything or will we just move right on to questions?
Convener, if I could just say a couple of paragraphs about it. So this is our mid-year report, so it gives you details of how we've performed during the first six months of the year. You'll note that we've had more complaints and our performance has dipped a bit compared to last year and probably similar to previous year. We're obviously looking at how we can improve that performance, so we have got regular monitoring in place. But we're also looking at various other things like the system, processes, training for people and how we monitor in a bit more detail within each of the services. So we're looking at trying to make improvements to the system if that'll help speed up the complaints. Look at the processes people go through to make sure that if there's any good practice, we can share that across the services if some areas are doing better than others, but also going outside the council and looking at our family group to see if there's any good practice we can share. And then for people, we're looking at the training side of it and making sure we've got enough people trained and that we've got enough cover of trained people during holiday periods because sometimes that can see as having a bit of a dip. The monitor, we're giving services more detailed breakdown each month and we're having some discussions about that at the council leadership team. So just to assure you, the council leadership team are looking at this closely and on a monthly basis and I'm happy to take any questions.
I'll always just make a wee comment to start with and I may come back and be a question later as well. Just that I'm hoping that, you know, our staff are feeling the pressure of the increased number of complaints that are coming in, that are trying to do their best job, but you know, are taking that, or individuals maybe coming forward and taking that level of frustration out to the first person they get to speak to. So I can understand that kind of happening. So I'm hoping that's not the case and that staff aren't under any additional pressure that sort of performance that been out springing in their direction when they're the one answering the phone. So pleased that we're digging deep into what the problems are and really trying to resolve them. But we'll move forwards, there's other questions coming in. Billy McPherson?
Thanks convener, I concur with your comments as well and thanks to Andrea for her overview. I suppose my question, because clearly the dip in performance is across the board in both stage one and stage two complaints. And I was just really wondering, Andrea did cover, you know, some of the potential, you know, aspects, volume of complaints, if you like, complexity of complaints perhaps, are there training issues, is there a staff resource issue? And I was just really wondering if officers had come to any conclusion as to what the biggest determining factor is in the dip in performance, because quite clearly, you've got a handle on what's causing the issue, you're better placed to be able to tackle it going forward.
So thank you very much for the question, Billy McPherson. It's probably a bit of a mixed bag when we look at it. There is more complaints, so that does sometimes impact. What we have seen with this peak in the number is it's a bit more spread, so it's not focused on one particular service. So the pressure shouldn't be on one particular service and so we're not seeing that when we look at that data. We have got a new complaint system, so it has taken a wee bit of bedding in and people are taking time to get used to. So that's obviously why we've been focusing on the training, but we've been doing some quality assurance checks of complaints and what we've found is people sometimes have actually answered the complaint, but they haven't closed off in the system in the right timeframe. So we've had to have a look at that and see how we can, you know, fix some of those issues just to deal with. What we also have had is during holiday periods, there can sometimes be a bit of a lag where maybe someone else hasn't been aware they are supposed to be looking after the complaints. So we've just been giving services some hints and tips about what we need to cover and to make sure we can try and keep that focus on the complaints and also giving each service those more detailed bits of information about their own individual service. Some of them are more complex as well and we're trying to make sure people use the system properly because if it is more complex, you can escalate it and you can extend the timeframe and maybe people are not always doing that when they look at the complaint because they maybe don't realise initially it's going to take quite a bit of time because they've got to go to several other services. So we're trying to put all those things in place and so I think there's a number of reasons we've picked up and we're trying to address each of the reasons.
Yeah, that's very helpful, Andrea, very detailed. Thanks indeed.
Billy Wright.
Okay, thank you convener. If you could look at page 16 and it's about the overview of the performance, item A. I think it was interesting, the amount of complaints that you had actually managed to close down, but I was wondering how many of these have been reopened since they were closed down or if you keep these stats. If you go to item F and the reasons, I was quite surprised that the reasons obviously, not that the failure to provide a service was up quite high, but the second one was the common reason was the attitudes of a member of staff. I know that staff are under a huge amount of strain considering the job that they do, but I was pleased to see on 5.4 that the council has undertaken bespoke handling complaints training and it's been offered to people to actually go on. And I was just wondering if we could hear a bit more about that and what happens after the training, is it still monitored?
So in relation to the first question, which was just about the complaints being closed and whether they're reopened. So normally if a complaint is dealt with at stage one, it will be completed at that point. So once we respond to it, there might be an area for improvement or that we put in place, but that's monitored separately if we want to change the process and we make sure that's followed through. If it comes back to us, it would be, it would come in and open as a stage two complaint. If someone was dissatisfied with the stage one, it would be opened as a stage two. So we don't normally report on that, but we can look at that information. The top reason obviously was the failure to provide a service. When we did a bit of a dig into that, we found that quite a lot of those were just, were down to miss bins, but they were rectified and rectified fairly quickly. So a lot of the failure for demand was pinging up on that side of it. And for the treatment and attitude of the staff, we have seen that as actually, although it's the second highest, we have seen an improvement in that over the years and we do think that's down to just the training that's been put in place. But also we did a refresh of the respectful engagement processes and a bit of training on that for employees. And that also helps employees deal with maybe customers that are being overly demanding and how people can actually deal with those types of issues as well and we know that has helped. So that treatment and attitude of staff members obviously is too high for us. We want to reduce that further, but we are making some kind of improvement in that, that side of things. In the bespoke training, there's a number of different bits of training. So some of that training is about how the system works, how the processes work, making sure people are clear about that. And then also just about that kind of how to write a good complaint letter, how to handle telephone calls that may be a bit more difficult in that respectful engagement. So it covers a number of different aspects across all the training and it also picks up on when you maybe should escalate the complaint to give yourself a bit more time where it is more complicated and who maybe you can go to if you need a bit of advice and support to help you deal with maybe a more complicated complaint that you've maybe not dealt with before. And I'm hoping that's covered your questions, Billy Wright.
I thought this was more aimed at staffing, you know, where staff would be sent on the training course. Because one of the complaints I get often is, you know, how people speak to a tenant. So I was just, so I'm a, who actually gets this training?
So the complaints training would be across all services. So it's aimed mainly at the complaints handlers and the complaints investigators. So there's quite a wide range of staff that have had that training and you'll note that we're looking at a more awareness raising and wider training, which might touch on some of those other things and that'll be wider across council services. We haven't rolled that out yet, we're still developing that.
Right, so not everybody gets it, is that what you're saying?
Not everybody, not everybody's had it. People can volunteer to take the training because it's openly available. So we do make the training sessions openly available across all services and we specifically target certain people who deal with complaints as well. So it's not, it is available to anyone who would like to participate in it. And the respectful engagement policy was circulated to all staff. So all staff have been made aware of some of the standards and practices in that respectful engagement document.
Right, thanks for that, but I'll take another question elsewhere. Thanks.
Okay, Billy Scott.
I wanted to ask about the statistics that show the number of calls answered by customer services, 183,000. I still frequently have people say to me, and it's mostly older people, who say that they struggle to get through, that their call isn't answered or if it is answered, it gets forwarded on to the department they want to speak to, but then it goes unanswered. So I kind of got two questions about that. The first one is, are any calls that customer services put onto a department, are they all warm transfers? Ie that the receiving department should be aware of what's happening and that there's someone on the line. And my second question is, do you keep a record of the number of calls that are lost? Because they've not been able to answer because of the pressures or whatever, or the number of calls that are coming in. Do you have a figure to balance the 183,000 calls that are answered to the number of calls that people just give upbringing because their call's not being answered?
So Billy Scott, I wouldn't have that detail. I don't know if there's anyone else on the call from customer services or whether we just need to take that away and bring that detail back to you.
Okay. And if that was to generate into a complaint because the call wasn't answered, what category would that fall in under your list of nature of complaints?
So that would fall into, it would depend on during the discussion with the person about what they wanted it to be logged as. So that could fall under failure demand or it could fall under another category. It just depends on when the individual either writes to us, we would look at what category it fits or if we're speaking to them, we would discuss with them what category we thought and whether they thought that was what they wanted their complaint logged as. I know that Mr Thompson has got his hand up, maybe he wants to come in about the customer services.
Yeah, on you go Paul.
Yeah, thanks Billy Keenan and thanks Billy Scott for the question. So I can confirm that we do keep various data, Billy Scott, in relation to unsuccessful calls. Unfortunately, the header digital on customer services is unable to join the call today because of another engagement. But I'm happy to take that one off and come back to you with further detail in terms of those data. But I would say in the meantime, is there any specific concerns or examples that you've got with individuals that have had a challenge in the contact and service then please do forward them on and we're happy to look at those separately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can I maybe ask, in relation to, we're having a sort of dig deep into why the complaints have continued to grow and can I maybe ask then why sort of housing and construction in particular and what's the flavour for what's going wrong there? I really ask that from the point of view of, that would be an area, given that we're looking for the rent payer to cover the cost and you know, rent's going up considerably as well at this particular period of time, that looks like it's an area that isn't as subject to the same level of cuts to get to, you know, a budget. We're no, we're drawing big, weight parts of the service, yet you know, we're getting a level of complaints in. And I wonder as well at the, what sort of thing we're seeing as complaints? Because I get a regular call and I'm sure that other councillors will get a regular call that said, the last time I checked my position in the waiting list, I was number 20 and within six months I've went to, I'm 40 on the waiting list. I'd in another 20 year or four, I'm ever likely to see a house coming in my direction. So I would imagine that some of this stuff that comes in our direction as councillors should have filtered its way through by way of complaint as well.
So the increase in neighbourhood services has been predominantly connected to housing and construction. So there'll be a range of different areas within that that people may be complaining on. So what neighbourhood services would do, we'd be looking at that in more detail. I know Mr Boyle's on the call and I know that team, you know, Tony and his team do look at that in a bit more detail. I don't know if he wants to say anything at this point or if we take that away and come back with a bit of a breakdown of the types of services that we're getting the complaints on.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take that away. Billy Keenan can come back to you with some specific information.
Yeah, and just wondering as well, Tony, if you, you know, the sort of headings didn't quite relate to what I see as complaints coming in in my direction of housing. Perhaps that's no filtering through quite the same, but when I see someone that's on the waiting list that's saying, you know, I was 20, I was 20 the last time I checked, I'm 40. Their frustrations get there and if, you know, if they're dealing with some of their members and staff on the phone and the position, that position gets worse then, their staff member can find it easy to deal with that because, you know, it certainly marks for angry individuals.
No, you're absolutely right and often these complaints are often very complex and multi-faceted. So we'll come back to you, I can't list the main reasons why we get these complaints, if that's helpful.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Doesn't appear to be any further questions then, is this report agreed? Okay then, thanks for that, we'll move on, Willie.
Yeah, thanks. Takes you on to item four, Olympia. And this report was remitted to this committee for further consideration by the Meeting of the City Governance Committee on 22nd of September.
Don't see any questions coming up on this one. Can I maybe ask one myself? I think when, when the report was done, it comes out fairly glowing. One thing that did strike me was the fact that it was never really picked up that when it's shot for its period of time that this report investigated, that there was fasteners that broke back in 2013 that, you know, within paperwork that the leisure and culture had at the time, the suggestion was that they would review 25% of the fasteners every year. So in four years' time, everything would have been checked or replaced. And yet, when we're shot for that period of time, knowing that the earlier closure and major refurb, these fasteners were breaking. So how did we not manage to capture that? Greg?
Convener, thanks for the question. If I can ask Mr Martin to come in and to respond to your query, please?
Thanks convener. I'll really need to go back and have a look at some of the detail on this. My recollection, there was works done in 2018 in terms of the rods that held up the lights and the cable trays. And in terms of that, when that then went into Covid, any of those additional inspections wouldn't necessarily have taken place and then events have taken over in terms of the overall project and refurbishment works. What I can confirm is in terms of those inspections. And eh, refurbishment works. But what I can confirm is, in terms of those inspections eh taking place going forward, they, they are in place. And in actual fact, we've got the planned closure this week and eh high level, high level access and inspections. And anything required will be carried out eh as and when. So eh, I can assure you that those eh inspections are now in place and, and being undertaken.
Yeah, okay, it's just that, couldn't figure out why e, even the people that come in to do the report hadn't picked up that that was a major issue for you so far back that, that was never addressed, so. There doesn't appear to be any further questions, so is this report agreed? Okay, okay, Willie, we'll move on.
Your thanks, Tishon Titan, five, city plan for Dundee annual report. Again, this report was remitted to this committee for further consideration by City Governance Committee held on twenty-seventh of October.
Yeah, is there any questions on this report? This report agreed? Thank you. Right, Willie, move on again.
Your thanks, Tishon Titan, six, internal audit reports, these are for noting.
Yeah, Cathy, you want to say anything on these particular reports, or we're just moving to questions?
Um, if I could just say a little bit about each of them before we go into the questions, that would be, if, if that's okay.
Perhaps we'll just do one at a time then, and we'll take the questions on each one as they go. Thanks.
Okay, so we do have three reports today that are coming. These are the ones that have been finalised since the last committee. The first one is section seventy-five planning obligations with substantial assurance. And the other two both have limited assurance in terms of service level agreements with external bodies and the GVA purchasing system. So if we look first at the um section seventy-five planning obligations, and as I say, that was substantial assurance. And what we found was that the council's arrangements for managing sections seventy-five payments and planning obligations include well-designed systems for recording obligations and managing documentation, and that the, the key areas require an improvement related to monitoring financial obligations. And ensuring that these are paid in line with the granted approval in a timely manner, and completing centralisation of specs used by the different services to track section seventy-five obligations at the point where we're looking at these things, we're being to make it a bit more smooth. We did identify as part of our testing a couple of items that had been issued very late or not at all. But we did have a review of the, the, especially to track the financial obligations. And we didn't find any others that had um really lengthy um outstanding obligations. So that gave us a bit of assurance that these were outliers, really. Um, and there was some other recommendations around the reporting, but I'm happy to um take questions on this one.
Good, that's a brilliant question.
Thanks, Convenor, and thanks Cathy for the overview. And as you say, it's a generally pretty satisfactory um, um audit report. That said, there's a bit about eh all processes not being fully documented. Eh, existing process maps require to be updated. It's on. I was just wondering, and maybe more for the service department rather than yourself, Cathy, but do we know if that is now in hand? Eh, can we have that assurance?
I know that that is in hand, but someone else will be able to give you a more up-to-date position.
Mr. Presswood.
Chair, thank you, yes, um, I can confirm that that is in hand, and it's obviously a tri size rather than just a planning colleagues that lead on this. It is a complex area, as Cathy has said. And eh, I do hope that we will have that concluded very soon. I'm not sure, David, whether you can give a precise eh timescale, what David Gray on the call representing planning.
Um, thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, I can confirm that the audit looked at our processes, our process maps and our, our monitoring. And whilst there were measures in place, they needed to be updated. So all will be updated by the, the thirty-first of this month. We're probably about monitoring of all sections. To update the process map, but that's been worked on as we speak. And, and as I said, the deadline for having completion of all of the measures between planning, finance and legal eh will be done by the end of this month.
Uh, that's, that's very assured, thank you.
Okay, Billy Scott? Just about the section that talks about um the limited clear evidence of communication or oversight, and it says there that uh, from discussions with management, they may have been impacted by level of resources and available capacity. Regardless of improvements you put into eh for the, the process, will there still be an issue with resources and, and capacity, or is that being dealt with as well?
You happy for me to answer that, Robin? Yeah.
Um, well, Chair, I was gonna come in first of all, if that was okay, and to recognise the very substantial challenges that we have and as a councillor, and I'm sure we would all, each service department would eh wish that there was additional resources eh available. But um I think um for us, it is a question of using the resources that we have eh within the three departments to try and maximize the benefit. I hope that clarity around eh the process mapping, which has already been highlighted by Cathy, will be eh a substantial way to, to allow us to address that issue. But David, do you want to say anything more?
Yeah, it's similar to what you've said there, Robin, thank you. Um, what we're looking at is whilst we recognise the challenges that the council faces in terms of resources, we're just looking at better ways of achieving better results. So when we're monitoring housing completions, in the past, we have monitored those manually. Gone out, out on site, checked them, how many houses are built. We now do our annual housing land, land audit based on building standards completions data. And over the last year or so, we've built up a new digital system that allows us to monitor based on consistent data, rather than, so we're rather than coming to go out on site and, and double check how many houses are built. So we're using new systems, new processes to try and do things more efficiently. Um, and, and that helps address some of the challenges that we have.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can I maybe ask a, a question? Obviously, I'm, I'm pleased that process has been tightened up and that, you know, we're certainly looking to get the money in as, as soon as we possibly can. Have we met all our obligations? Because I don't see anything that we've reported. We've still got thirty-five outstanding section seventy-five agreements that at some stage might bring something to the council, and given that we're structured, eh, I'm wondering why we didn't see anything like that. And, you know, wondering whether, like in the Western Gateway, have we got an obligation to build eh a school based on, we've taken section seventy-five, or we haven't? And, you know, what sort of money is outstanding there?
Chair, if I can, in terms of sharing the information, um, about that, that is available to elected members. And we brief the convenor very regularly eh on that to ensure that um there is an overview of the, the possession. In terms of the council's obligations, um, we would not as a councillor have an obligation to do so. But we would clearly eh be required if we had taken financial contributions and then didn't deliver eh an obligation. Um, Greg, can I hand over to you?
Good, Greg, Mr. Cogan.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan, it's actually fair. So just in relation to your question on the financial monitoring aspects of the consent. So within the capital plan, where projects exist to which there's a contribution that's being funded through section seventy-five consents, there is a figure within the budget, and it's part of the regular reports that members receive for monitoring. There's information in relation to um that information, management projection. What it will go down to is a level of detail in terms of the number of individual um, um applications that may or may not be um outstanding. But it does give you a global figure in terms of where we are tracking against the income that we expect to receive during the financial year.
Thanks for that, Paul. Maybe the next time we're looking at them, you can point it out to me in more detail. I accept that every day is a school day.
I'm happy to do, sir.
Okay, doesn't appear to be any further questions? Mr. Scott is on, agreed.
Okay, Cathy.
Thank you. And the next one is service level agreements with external bodies. And what we found there was that the council no longer has a formally defined and up-to-date process in place to ensure the requirements of the following the public pound guidance that is a national guidance um I adhere to. It was last looked at in two thousand and fifteen. Our services have generally implemented their own processes to manage and administer the existing funding relationships. But what that has resulted in is that there is some inconsistency about the approach to these and the identification of which arrangements need more monitoring and which need less monitoring. So the actions that we've got are really about making sure that we're being consistent across all services and to give us something that is um efficient and effective.
Yeah, so, for a question?
I think Bailey Scott was first, actually.
Okay, sorry, well, Bailey Scott.
It was just asked about the updating of the, the guidance, and the last done in eh ten years ago. I just wondered what the frequency of these things should be, and should it be getting something built in there to make sure that they're reviewed on a more regular basis?
So the guidance itself does say that it should be looked at annually. I suspect that's perhaps um more frequently than it needs to be looked at, but it certainly needs to be more frequent than um, than it has been. Um, but there is a group who are going to be looking at all of this. I'm not sure how far they're going to be able to tell you where they've got to with that in terms of what they think they'll do going forward.
Mr. Cogan?
Well, just Bailey Keenan, it's myself again, confirm that that work is underway to, to look at the guidance. And part of that will be putting a more stringent process in place in terms of version control that sets out an appropriate timescale in terms of when eh that documentation would need to be reviewed. So I can't confirm what that period eh would be at this moment, but I would agree with Cathy that on an annual basis eh may seem quite onerous, given the level of changes that we would expect on that.
Yeah, Billy Scott, you happy with that? Okay, uh, Billy McPherson.
Thanks, uh, Convenor, just following on eh from that, and it's just really, clearly ten years is a very long time. And, and what's obvious from that is that there's been a degree of inconsistency eh flagged up, given that effectively different services have implemented their own processes, and there's not, if you like, been a sort of pan-council consistent approach. I'm just really wondering if there's eh, eh, anybody's looked into why that could happen, why that could fall between eh the stools, as it were. And eh, because as I say, a decade for um that to, to run on seems inordinately lengthy.
Is, is this Paul or is it Mr. Cogan? You're making it hard for us. I'm putting yous in separate rooms the next time.
Um, thanks, Bailey Keenan, and thanks, Bailey McPherson for the question. So eh, I mean, eh, I accept, we accept the findings of the audit in terms of two thousand and fifteen being eh too long a period you know, and which that would be reviewed. I can confirm in terms of the reason for that, it relates to, to staff, key staff that have left that previously undertook that process. And, and you know, those responsibilities haven't always been passed on to their replacements. But um we are picking that up on that, picking it up on. Now, there are elements within the areas eh where we do fund eh third parties that there are higher um um information that is provided um in line with the guidance, such as for Leicester and Culture, Dundee, et cetera. But it's just not widespread across all the areas that meet that guidance. So I think there's an opportunity here just to fresh, refresh the previous guidance, given the length of time there's been since it was prepared, ensure it's appropriate and moving forward. And we do have the appropriate controls eh for these arrangements coming back to members. So um they're aware of any new agreements that are reached, and also importantly, how, how that funding is being um managed.
Okay, can, can I maybe just make a little comment? Thanks for that, Paul. Um, staff come and go, and obviously, you know, and understand that, you know, eh, eh, you know, eh, the reasons that you explain, Paul. The fundamental point I suppose I would make is that situation will continue, that staff will come and go. And I suppose the reassurance I think we would be looking for is that this commitment to, you know, ensuring that a more regular review actually happens. I'm not looking for you to come further back. I'm, I'm sure you've taken that on board. But I just, I, I just feel it's important that we have that reassurance, and, you know, I thank, thank you for your reply, Paul.
Okay, can I maybe ask the question that, it's really because it prompts the signal eh, eh, the service level agreement. And some of the organisations that are eh out for consultation in the budget, where they've been submitting service layer or, or you know, reporting to a service level agreement, it might well be you today. And, and they may well be you performing that for very small amounts of money in some cases. And I'm just wondering how that will be taken into account in the budget consultation.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So, so the, the report concluded that, that there is monitoring of this um of these arrangements with these organisations still ongoing, albeit it's just not on a consistent basis across all services. Because rather than it being done on the basis of a centralised framework, it's been managed by services. But as far as the budget consultation process, there is information eh within the process, within the consultation rather, that's been issued. It sets out clearly what the expectation of those monies are for and, and what the impact um and potential mitigations rather, should it be removed. So we would be um hoping that as much information comes back from that exercise as possible in terms of setting out any impact or reducing it.
Good, thank you for that. I don't see any further questions. So is this report agreed? Back to yourself then, Cathy, for the, the last one.
Thank you. So the final one is the GVA purchasing. Um, again, a limited assurance, oh, sorry. Um, so what we found here was that the controls in the city development GVA purchasing process are not well-defined and effective in comparison to the process which is applied to the majority of other purchasing in the council, which happens through the civic system. The limited functionality of the GVA system means that implementation of more sophisticated cost analysis and control approaches is likely impractical without system replacement. And I know that there is a system replacement being um, being undertaken at the moment. Um, we've raised a number of recommendations relating to system user access controls, segregation of duties and approved workflows, which could in principle be addressed within the existing system. But we have recognised that actually the effort and time involved in that might not be cost-effective, and it might be more sensible to put that effort into the specification and the procurement of the new system. And I think from the rec, the recommendations we've made, that is what will happen in some of the cases. But, but happy for myself or, or people within the service to answer any questions.
So any questions on this report? Okay, is this report agreed? Okay, thank you for that, Cathy. Willie?
Okay, thanks, Convenor. Tishon Titan, seven, internal audit plan update and progress reports. These are also for noting.
Do you want to make any comment, Cathy, or will we just go to questions?
Um, the only thing I would just like to make a comment about is the, the Gaia's im- improvement plan that we've got in here. Just very quickly to let you know that that's eh an update on where, what are with the implementation of moving towards being fully compliant with the new um standards. We've got five actions that are already completed. True that we can't complete until into next year, when we get to the end of, of the first year. And the others are a little bit behind the original schedule that we had agreed, but I'm not concerned that we won't be finalized all of the information that we need to have in place and before we do the self-assessment in April.
Bailey McPherson, is that, you looking to come in for a question?
It is, thank you, Convenor. Thanks, Cathy, for that. Um, my question's about the information on page two hundred and thirty-three, and that's the social work contracts and payments eh audit. Now, eh, members eh who were at the City Governance Committee on Monday night will be aware that I raised eh a question about the tendering of daycare services. And what I understood was a very, very long time since these were last tendered. Um, I, I followed up, as I said, I didn't want to eh, um, you know, prolong the, the debate on Monday night. But I did follow this up with Mr. Eh, eh Berry, the director of the Health and Social Care Partnership. And his response, and I know he's to come back with, to me with further information, but, and I don't want to misquote him, so I'm going to quote him word for word. Um, eh, just to confirm, we do not re-tender frequently for social care services unless there are either challenges with existing care providers or fail withdrawal from the market. It provides certainty for providers and staff as well as service users, and allows us to build up um good, strong relationships with providers. Now, my question really eh is in relation to this internal audit, is this area being looked at? I'm conscious it's very late in the day, eh, because I, I think the revised date's the end of this month for this eh reporting. But to my mind, I, I understood, and perhaps eh, well, Mr. Many will know better than I, but I but I understood there was a legal responsibility to secure best value, which generally requires a proper process of tendering for any purchase of external services. So I was just really wondering, Cathy, from your perspective, if this area is being touched upon with this? And also some clarity on the legal position regarding ensuring best value is adhered to would be helpful as well.
Yeah. So you want to go first then, Cathy, and we'll see if Mr Many has an answer.
Yeah, sorry. I, I would need to go back to the file to look at what the actual brief for this is in terms of the detail. But I'll come back to you after the meeting, if that's okay.
That's absolutely fine, Cathy.
Okay, thanks.
Mr Many on the call?
Thanks very much, Convenor. Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Bailey McPherson. I think elected members on the call will be aware that in addition to my role as head of Democratic and Legal Services at Dundee City Council, I perform a variety of other roles. One of those is as clerk and standards officer to the Dundee City Integration Joint Board and also advise the Health and Social Care Partnership. So I can confirm that when Mr Berry responds more fully, that will incorporate my comments on the particular issue you've raised, Bailey McPherson.
That's very helpful, Roger, and I'll await that in due course. Thanks.
Good. Thanks for that. No further questions on this report. So then is that agreed? Okay then, thank you, Willie. Move on again.
Your thanks. Take you on to item eight, external quality assessment of internal audit arrangements. This is for noting.
Yeah. Any questions on this report? So the report agreed then? Thank you. Okay, Willie, moving on again.
Okay, thanks for the watch. Take you on to the remaining item, item nine, other reports relevant to the remit of the scrutiny and audit committee. This is before you for consideration.
Yeah. I mean, I obviously appreciate getting this report. And I did ask for one on desire contracts in relation to their material purchasing or planned against actuals. And wondering whether at some stage we should maybe consider whether there's an audit needs to be done in the area for, for council, similar because obviously we hear spiralling costs. And I'm concerned that we don't set budgets accurately if, if we don't have a better understanding of what the costs are out there when we're, when we're looking at taking on work ourselves or, you know, or even what's happening within contract services or, or the housing department. Is it, Mr, is it Paul this time or Mr Cogan?
Myself, Convenor. So thanks for, if you can leave that with us, the council leadership team, along with Cathy, will be discussing the future internal audit plan. So we'll take that point raised under advisement and also look at the council and service risk registers as well and come back to committee with the outcome of that discussion.
I know, I know that Cathy would come around the rest of the team asking for, have we got it right? Have we got a plan that's heading into the future? So threat one way and threat another is, is another approach, is it? So thanks very much for taking that and giving it consideration. Is this report agreed? Okay then, I think I've beat our records. I normally last three hours in the chair at this, so I'm letting yous all back to your work early.
Early Christmas present, Kevin.
Thanks very much for that. Have a nice time at Christmas when it comes.
You too. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.